Do we have the flag there?
Right behind you.
Yeah, it's here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Annabelle? We'll make sure that microphone works. Annabelle has to do her presentation then go to a softball banquet, so we're trying to help her out.
Oh, great.
Got it.
Try that microphone, Annabelle, to see. There it is.
Thank you. Hi. Is this on? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, sorry. Hi. Um, okay, so this is an update on my softball shed project. Um, kind of a recap. I've been working on this project for my gold award, which I started in 7th grade, which was 2019 to 2020 school year. Um, COVID kind of made it hit a big curveball, and I've had to work a lot around a lot of difficulties with lumber pricing and quarantine and COVID overall. Um, so, yeah, I finally have kind of come to an end of this project. So as far as fundraising, um, I have continued to fundraise since I last saw you guys, which I believe was in July this year, or somewhere around that. Um, I did a car wash, I believe it was almost two years ago, a year ago now, and we made $800 at that. Um, me and my mom actually started a dog-walking, cat-watching business, and we've made just about $3,000 from that over the past two years now. And, um, my troop actually started to fundraise for girls in the future in our troop, and there's only three of us now, so we split the last 600, and we each get 200, so my 200 is going towards this project. So overall, we have just over $4,000 now to go towards this project as a whole. Um, I recently had sent out a couple of letters to different, um, local, I don't know what you can call it, building places, um, and one of them actually happened to be Middleton Lumber here in Hampton. And, um, basically, we dropped off a letter, and I was saying, kind of told them the whole deal that you guys, I kind of just told you guys, where I've been working on my project for a long time, and I don't know if it would be possible for you to give me a discount on something, or help me with lumber, or kind of that general idea. And they actually came back to me saying, "We have a shed for you," and I was like, "That's amazing." Um, so originally, the shed was $5,500, and they actually discounted it to $3,200 for me. And they also said that they would provide transportation, and they would get their, get a truck for me and bring it down to the field for me as long as we got permission from the school. And I already talked to Mr. Lassard about that, and it's all been figured out. Um, so this is the shed here on the right. It's a 12-by-10 shed, and, um, we have a plan actually to put it, where to put it, on the field. Um, it's actually out on our softball field up the third baseline, so it's gonna be four feet from, four feet from the out-of-play line. And basically, the only work that we're gonna have to do is the groundwork. Um, basically, we'd have to kind of fix up the ground to be able to support the shed itself and make sure it doesn't deteriorate easily over the next couple of years. Um, so this is more about the transportation of the shed. So they said they could provide us with a Ford F-550, which is basically just a really big pickup truck, and they would bring it down on a flatbed trailer, which would make the shed's weight, um, very, not really, what the word was he? Um, make the shed's weight very, oh my goodness.
Distributed?
Yeah, distributed, thank you. Um, against that, so it really would do very little harm to the driving across the field. And we would then place it on top of our already-pre-made foundation that we have put into the ground. Um, as far as what the shed looks like, there's a lot of options. As you saw, it was white in the last, in a couple slides ago. So we obviously have the option to paint it a different color. We could also maybe have a local artist come paint something on it, if that's an idea. We could also do the school H, or we could do a shark, or anything like that. So the options are pretty, pretty open. Um, oh. There we are. Um, the last couple of things that we're kind of doing on this project in total is we are applying for a building permit right now, and I'm getting, I'm working with, the man I'm working with, Andy Carberry, who is the manager of the Middleton Lumber Store, and we're working with him to fill, um, fill out the building permit. And then we will be calling DigSafe to make sure that there's no irrigation where we're planning to dig. Um, then obviously, the groundwork that I spoke about, and the shed delivery. Um, we're hopefully going to get the shed in as close as we could to the groundwork, so it's not like we just have a big patch of dirt open. Um, and then I just have to finish my gold award paperwork, and we're pretty much done from there. Um, so the target goal of completion will be around mid-August. Um, that way, I can get my people who are working with me to help me finish this project altogether, and we still have a little flexibility time for, um, to finish it, so. Yeah, does anyone have any questions?
Did, did you say it was gonna be placed four feet from the, uh, baseline?
So actually, there's two lines in softball. Yeah, so there's one where it's right on the field, and then there's a line called the out-of-play line, which is about 20 feet from the foul line, which is right on the field, so it'll be four feet off that line.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I want to thank you for all the work that you've done over the last two years.
Thank you so much.
What a great job.
Thank you.
And, uh, we will let you go to your softball banquet.
Thank you so much.
I hope you enjoy it. Thank you.
Would you like a picture?
No, I have, just make sure you hit two home runs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And another slight change to the agenda. Can we have Adam Edgar come up from HYA?
How are you?
I am well, thanks. Thank you. Um, trying to follow that is gonna be difficult. But, um, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for having me here today. I wanted to just come in and check in. We haven't really talked since last basketball season to make sure that we're all set for the, our upcoming season. So to fill everybody in, we did end up running our season through the rim, RBL, but we were fortunate enough to be able to practice at Marston and Hampton Academy. And I will tell you, that made all the difference. Uh, we are in a much different place, I think, than we were last September and August when we were having this discussion, uh, which is fantastic. Um, so what I'm trying to do now is sort of make sure that we're all set for next season, answer any questions or concerns that people have, um, going forward. So just some other background information. This season, we had 200 players, grades 3 through 8, participated in HYA basketball. Traditionally, we have closer to 350, and we weren't able to serve our younger players, our coed 1-2. Um, however, we were, we did have a really successful season. It worked out well. I did want to thank a couple people, if you'll indulge me. Joe Williams and Matt Lewis at the Rim were fantastic. And, um, to some local people, Chris and Jessa Coats at the Barn. They really kind of stepped in when we weren't able to be in the schools, and it was huge. It was huge, kind of the whole community came together. So, I know you're squeezing me in here. My ask is this. I would really like to get HYA basketball back to what we were in the past. I would like to keep it sort of a closed program for students in our community and the other communities that serve Winnicott. Um, instead of having our kids playing against kids from all over the state. I think that, for many reasons, that would be advantageous. So what I would like to do is to be able to look at getting back in for practices and then utilizing the gyms for Saturday morning games.
Any board feedback? Okay. Looks like it's a go.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. If I could, real quick, Jason Lever's been HYA president for years. He's, uh, I wouldn't say he's tiring, but stepping down. If anybody's watching, please congratulate and thank him. That's an enormous amount of work he's put in over the years.
And you'll be in touch with Keith?
I'll be in touch with Keith, and if there's really no questions, fantastic. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. I'll turn it over to Dr. Costa, who recognized some very valuable people.
We have, um, several, um, staff members that are retiring this year, and we want to take a moment to recognize those individuals. I'm gonna start with Marston School, Hillary Scovard. Just a little bit about Hillary. You know I'm gonna do that, right? Yes, I am. It's my, this is my one chance, so I gotta do it, taking advantage of it.
Go for it.
All right. Hillary was hired in August of 1995, speech-language pathologist for the Marston School. At that time, she was a busy mom as she and Jim were raising two wonderful daughters, Jessica and Eli, who I've had the pleasure of getting to know as adults now with their own children. She survived a funding debacle of 1999 with then-superintendent Jack Burgoyne. I was looking through your file and noticed you got a pink slip back then, right? Yeah. But has been recognized for all kinds of participation in Math Night, and of course, um, all of the work that she's done in our district. Principal O'Connor recognized her for that participation, and also, she received highly-qualified teaching status under Superintendent Jim Gaylord. She has participated in countless professional development opportunities while keeping her credentials up to date. An advocate for students receiving letters of commendation from many parents, including the Bouchets and the Walls, Hillary is an outstanding professional colleague and friend. Congratulations to Mrs. Scovard for all of your hard work and service to our community. We are better because you were part of it. So thank you so very much. Next, Michelle Crowdo.
You don't have to say anything, just bask in that moment of glory, right? This is for you.
Little bit about Michelle Crowdo. She was hired in August of 2003 after graduating from Leslie University. She's a 3rd-grade teacher at Marston School and has been so since that time. At the time, she was raising two lovely daughters, Amy and Hannah, with her husband John, beloved science teacher at Winnicott High School. Michelle continued to take classes at Chapman University, Walden University, Colorado State University, University of New England, committed to lifelong learning and education. Recognized by many families in the community, including the Vogels and the Poetries for her kindness, respect, and patience for her students. It is no wonder she was nominated for the New Hampshire Teacher of the Year and was deemed a finalist. Thank you for your work at Marston with C and being a champion for education. Enjoy your retirement and your new grandbaby at the line. So happy. And next, Elizabeth Cronin, Liz Cronin. Just a few words about Liz. Liz hired in 2005 as a Title I tutor. She later received her teaching certificate in 2007 from Granite State Teaching College, and then was hired as a Target Assist teacher, and then moved into 4th grade in 2010. But she is finishing up as a math Target Assist teacher at the Marston School in these last few years. Liz is truly a team player. She has assisted with our summer program, including Camp Invention. She has a true passion for mathematics and science, working with data and ensuring student success. Thank you, Liz, for all of your hard work and efforts. It has always been a pleasure being your colleague, and best of luck. Last and certainly not least, from Marston School, is Judy Sullivan. Mrs. Sullivan was also hired in 2005 as a special ed case manager for Marston School. She came from Virginia Beach in the U.S. Air Force, where she was a chief master sergeant superintendent 480 for the intelligence group Langley Air Force Base in Hampton, Virginia. Really amazing, right? Judy held several positions prior to coming to Hampton at Epping Middle and High School, Ry Elementary, Western Branch Elementary School, Brockwood Elementary School, and Glenwood Elementary School. But as Judy told me, working in Hampton was her favorite. Correct? Judy has been recognized by many parents for her hard work, support, guidance, and understanding for working with some of our very challenging students. She is a behavior expert at times when needed and has been recognized by the Holmes family, the Boucher family. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, for your years of service to our students. You will be greatly missed. Best of luck. And we have three retirees from Hampton Academy. I'm gonna begin with Karen Brand. Karen Brand was hired in August of 2005. Previous to her arrival at Hampton Academy, she worked at Sacred Heart. To say that Karen has been a lifesaver to our district would be an understatement. She, along with her colleagues, have helped to navigate the district during these past few years during the pandemic. Knowledgeable, practical, hardworking, calm, and sensible. She is someone we came to rely on, morning, noon, and night, weekends included. Always pleasant, accommodating, and helpful. It is no surprise that last year she was nominated as School Nurse of the Year by her colleagues. Mrs. Brand was described in one letter as a first responder committed to the safety and well-being of all. She works tirelessly with families and staff with a smile on her face. She is kind, knowledgeable, a team player, and a district champion. She is truly our hometown hero. Best wishes to Karen Brand as she begins her retirement. Sean Tierney? Come on up. Little bit about Mr. Tierney. Mr. Tierney began working at the academy in the fall of 1996. He was hired by Superintendent Weiss. Sean did his student teaching at Hampton Academy back in the fall of 1991 under science teacher Al Magnuson. This dynamic duo continued their work together up until the time when Mr. Magnuson retired. Sean has been highly involved with curriculum work, negotiations for C, school improvement teams, coaching volleyball, and overseeing the green team. A lifelong learner, Sean continued to take classes at Walden University, Antioch University, University of New England, Fitchburg State College, and Plymouth State University. A former camp counselor, he was instrumental in bringing our middle school students to environmental camp. Perhaps what stands out most about Mr. Tierney is his ability to engage his students in lessons that foster a love for science. When I asked his colleagues about him, they spoke about his ability to be the best master of ceremonies, a true crack-up on the microphone. He knows how to work a crowd, engage his audience, and make everyone feel comfortable. Thank you, Mr. Tierney, for all that you have done for our middle school. We wish you all the best in your retirement. And last but certainly not least, Principal David O'Connor. Principal David O'Connor began his work back in 1998 when he was hired to serve as the assistant principal to Principal Nancy Andrews at the Marston School. He had previously served as the assistant principal at South Lawrence East School and has been a, and had been a teacher there for 10 years in that same district. The following year, when Mrs. Andrews was transferred to Center School, David became the principal of the Marston School. In the fall of 2000, I had the pleasure of joining the Marston School as Mr. O'Connor's assistant. In 2009, Mr. O'Connor was transferred to Hampton Academy. His ability to form community partnerships, build a strong school culture, and his commitment to educational excellence made him a logical choice given the stability and leadership that the district was seeking at that time. Mr. O'Connor has led a number of initiatives in his time since then, including the ski club, class trips to New York City, Memorial Day and Veterans Day assemblies, and the Christmas parade. It all should, should be noticed that the middle school was recently named the 11th performing high, middle school in the state under your leadership. Mr. O'Connor was instrumental in helping to secure a building project which the community supported after two attempts. The most important legacy that Mr. O'Connor leaves behind is all of the relationships he has formed since he began. Mr. O'Connor is well-known and deeply loved for his care, commitment, and compassion for his students, staff, and families. A mentor to me, a friend to all on the leadership team. David will surely be missed. We wish you all the best as you begin this next chapter in retirement.
Some comments?
One more thing I, I would like to, um, just to, um, share on behalf of the board was the decision was made back, um...
Dr. Costa?
Yes.
Can we have Dave say a few words?
Mr. O'Connor? Just one more thing, can you come up here for a minute? So there's something else I want to share. We talk about, um, David and his legacy, and David has been in our district for almost 25 years. And a decision that the board made back in April at the board meeting was to dedicate a bench for your years of service. So out on the front, we are going to unveil the bench that has your name, and just thank you for your years of service. We're just, we're just so fortunate to have had the pleasure to work with you and know you, and you have left a longstanding legacy that will never be forgotten. So just wanted to know, you to know that that was there, and we look forward to unveiling that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I'm humbled and honored. Thank you. Okay. Public comment on agenda items? And this might be a time for retirees to... You don't have to stay.
How about a picture?
Oh, yeah, can we get a picture of all of you before you go?
A picture of all the retirees?
Can I get a picture of the retirees?
That's a great idea. Thanks, Frank.
Retirees, before you go, can you, we just get one picture? Mrs. Levine, maybe we can get them together? That'd be awesome. Where would you like them? Would you want them up there? What do you think?
Just rec. I've got just a couple, like two little rec things, and that's it. Really nothing for the...
We don't make a pyramid? Where do you think you want to be? How about if you're, how about if you're up there in the... Want to be up there? Do you want to go up there?
He said, "Do you, do you have anything?"
No. No. Move forward.
Oh, sure.
That'll ruin the picture.
Yep. All right. Ooh, here. Are we vamping?
Come on, you can put them come in. Come right on in. Let's all get in.
I know, I'm like...
We've never been in.
Ellis, I'll, I'll... You make my hands shake.
Yeah. Come on, that's a great shirt. It's perfect. Oh, that was her, that's why she sat there. All right, ready, everybody, smile. All right, one more. Is everybody... Yep, thank you.
You, did you smile?
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Um, maybe, yeah, things to look at if we can.
Lois? Lois?
Yes.
Does he want to say a few words?
I don't know.
Yes. It'd be good, I'd probably... Oh, no, I don't have a committee. I have stuff afterwards.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Public comment? Okay. Seeing none? Uh, I don't have anything for my committees. Frank, you don't have anything? Wendy? What do you have?
Let's see. Am I turned on? Yeah. Um, just a couple of things from the rec department. They are still looking for a driver, so if you know anyone who is interested, particularly, they're really looking for somebody to drive the rec kids around, but also the rec seniors on trips, things like that. You can apply at the rec department. Uh, they do still have some space left in summer camps, including, um, what I thought looked great, hands-on science fund for preschoolers. I think the general idea is for families that have their older kids in Camp Invention. This is kind of an alternative for your younger kids, so that's gonna be June 27th through July 11th. You can sign up for that online. They do also still have some space at the, um, the Rec at the Rim program over the summer, which is essentially, it's what we used to call Tuck Camp. So it's their, it's their week-long, mini-week-long summer camp for kids in town. That's it?
Okay. Uh, and, and that kind of concludes our board member updates. Ginny, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. I'm remiss because we're trying to do some things quickly tonight, but, uh, Dr. Costa?
I think it would be appropriate at this time to take a moment of silence in recognition of Super Evan who passed last Friday. Please take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Costa. Uh, Mr. Lannan, Center School?
Thank you, Dr. Costa, for that. As you know, Center School, the Hampton community, um, the Austin family. Our thoughts go out to the Austin family during this very difficult time. And, um, um, the school itself has worked together to try to do its best for kids, and will continue to do that. And again, deepest condolences go out to the Austin family. With that being said, you have a copy of my board report, as well as some sample schedules. Do you have any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Lannan?
Would you like to review his schedule for next year? At this time, it's gonna come up later in the agenda, but he could do it while he's right there. If there's any highlights he wants to share?
Everybody's been part of the process, and I think they can come up with an idea of what we can do. I know with Emily Kimble, we did a garden. With Molly, we did flowers, and some more garden. And I think it'd be really nice if the kids and staff came up with something to honor Evan.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night, everyone.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That was a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
I don't think we need any discussion. All in favor? 4-0. Hello, Mr. Sadler.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thanks.
Great. So, just a couple end-of-the-year updates. Only a few days left, but still some stuff going on. We had a fantastic parent group that worked with Mrs. Hopper. They're putting on a luau of sorts. It's a sort of end-of-the-year celebration party for 5th graders, based on all they lost in 3rd and 4th grade in terms of COVID and school events. So, that'll happen tomorrow afternoon during school at the last hour or so of the day. And then on Thursday, we'll have our 5th grade farewell assembly in the afternoon. We did invite parents to that event, but due to seating limitations, we do ask that we don't bring other relatives, siblings, et cetera. We only have so much room with students and staff and parents in our gym. And then Friday, we'll have our final school-wide morning meeting, where we received another generous donation from the Rotary Club to help support our Read 100 program. That's when we unveil the t-shirts to the students and recognize all of those kids who read 100 or more books. And I'm proud to say this year that out of a little over 300 students, 261 students read 100 or more books. So, it's probably the most we've ever had. I tell the kids every single year that my dream is to look up into the audience and have every kid down on the floor with me with a shirt on, and we are probably the closest we've ever been to it. So, I'm just really proud of the students and staff. Other than that, I'll take questions on my schedule, or my board report, or anything else you'd like to chat about.
Any questions? Wendy, did you have your hand up? No? Frank?
Yeah, same question I asked Tim regarding your morning meetings, 8:35 to 9 o'clock. I would take that, that is advisory as well?
Yeah, it's like advisory at an elementary level. It's where we use responsive classroom to build community, form relationships, you know, review expectations, and kind of set the tone for the day with students. It's a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Sadler? Ginny?
I know we voted on her resignation, but wish Mrs. Hopper good luck with her new assignment, and won't miss her.
Absolutely. You know, she's been a wonderful addition the last two years. A big loss for Marsden School, but I think, you know, and sometimes we lose, and then we gain in the other end of it. So, I'm looking forward to it. And again, we wish her nothing but the best of luck, and she's been phenomenal for us in the last two years. So, a very challenging time to enter administration, and she's done quite well.
Hello?
Hi, how's it going?
Good. How are you?
Doing all right. Doing all right. We had a wonderful field day today. I'd like to thank all the parents and the staff for putting 110% in, and the fire department for putting the ladder up and spraying the kids down. That should be up on Facebook soon enough. So, they had a lot of fun, something they haven't been able to do for the last three years. So, really good experience. You have my board report. One thing I do want to, you know, just reemphasize, it's no surprise to anybody, but Bonnie Heath has been moved forward to the next round of Teacher of the Year. So, we'll be working with that throughout the summer, and I think it ends up sometime in August or September. Find out. So...
I have a question for you.
Sure.
I don't know if Lois, I'm sure Lois has spoken with you. I know Mrs. Shepherd, who's sick tonight, has spoken with you. What sort of training are faculty members going to get before instituting the Advisor/Advisee program?
A whole bunch.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, it starts in September, so...
Yep, and so, the first training is going to start on the 20th. We have the Brown Center coming over. They're going to split up. So, the advisory program, you can see in my schedule for the academy, it has it built in. Every single day, 20 minutes, small groups of eight or nine students. It is going to be separated by grade level and by team. So, if some kids are on sixth academy, all of the advisories will be sixth academy kids, okay? So, school within a school with an advisory within that small school. So, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be splitting the staff up into three different groups. Brown Center's sending over three different trainers. They're all going to be getting the same message on the 20th. They're going to be working for about an hour and a half. What is advisory? What is a teacher's role as an advisor? And what is not a role of a teacher for an advisor? They are not a counselor. They are that, you know, very similar to what is going on at the elementary schools with responsive classroom. There's one adult that is, you know, meeting with the students during a non-academic time and making that connection, and being that one person that they can go to, or the adult that will have time, you know, during that 20 minutes during the day to say something's up with that student, and either be able to check in with them, or be able to reach out to one of our counselors or administration, and really having a larger connection with them. Once we, we are also talking about a full-value contract with, and so that's the rules of those eight or nine kids with that teacher. What is that group? You know, what do they all agree on as their, their rules for their group? 6th grade is going to be going to environmental camp later on in the year. There, we're going to be pulling back pieces from what they learned there into advisory. Same thing with 7th grade going into, they're going to be going to the Brown Center and working on all of those ropes courses, and, you know, Brown Center coming in, training the teachers. Teachers go out, they go to the Brown Center, and they're going to be working with those kids within advisory also. So, after we do the training, each grade level is going to have their own separate training, similar ideas. And then the 22nd and 23rd, we have our advisory committee coming in to work two full days and really outline a calendar for the year, themes, what, you know, what are we going to be doing throughout the year? 6th grade, for example, they're just coming in. They need to get to know what a middle school is like. What is the life like here? So, there's, there's a lot of little details that, you know, instead of just having them jump into the deep end of the pool, we're going to be, that's going to be a focus for advisory, getting to know the kids, and then getting to know the middle school. 7th grade doesn't need that, getting to know the middle school piece. 8th grade doesn't need to get to know the middle school piece. 8th grade needs a theme about leadership, because they are the oldest students in this school. They're going to be the ones who are going to be setting the tone for the culture of the school for all of the other kids. How to act, how not to act. So, 7th grade, we do a lot with, you know, Service Credit Union is just here, and we're talking about real-life experiences with budgets and jobs and career aspirations. So, I see that as a large component of what advisory would be for 7th grade. There's already a lot that we're doing that will fit under that umbrella. So, the schedule is really just setting up that time to have more of a focus during the day.
If I could interject just for a minute? One of the, one of the pieces that came out from the governor's newsletter, which I shared with you, was very clear about social-emotional learning programs for students of all ages. So, responsive classroom is what we're using pre-K grade 5 at Center and Marsden. The question becomes, what are we doing for our middle school students? I believe the mental health team who's here tonight, they may want to chime in as well, but this has kind of been one of their hopes and dreams now for a while, and I think that they may want to also add some pieces, just to reiterate the importance of this at the middle school, and that it's really important that kids not only feel connected to a teacher, but feel connected to a peer group. So, the advisory does two things. It connects these children to a staff member, and it has to be a staff member other than the guidance counselor. That's very clear. The research is very clear about that. But also, it connects them to a peer group, the other piece, that we want to make sure that every single student has connections. That is the biggest factor to making sure that kids feel comfortable in a school, they feel acknowledged, and they feel part of that community.
Frank?
I think they're going to, I think they're going to come up, and they're not, they want to share a little more.
Fine.
Yeah.
They're coming up behind me. I'm going to let them...
I hope I didn't cut you off, Ken.
No, no, no. If you don't, I'll just keep, I'll just keep going. So, I'll let them talk.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Tamburelli. I'm a school counselor here at Hampton Academy. I just thank you for giving us time to talk about why advisory is so important to us, and we're so thrilled to have it on the daily schedule. The elementary schools are doing a great job with morning meeting daily, and we're seeing the benefits that the students are reaping from that. And so, our main goal is to have consistency and alignment with the elementary schools, so that when students transition here, there's not this major interruption or drop-off of care and concern, and they're feeling like they still have that relational aspect at school. What we know about what morning meeting does and advisory is that it really supports factors of intrinsic motivation. So, this is essential to learning, and it's essential to success at school. So, building autonomy, a sense of purpose, belonging at school, sense of competence, curiosity. We want kids to be curious and want to learn, and just connecting school with fun. I was reading an article in Ed Week about how to do advisory right for both teachers and students. And they cited a Gallup poll from 2017, and they were saying that 24% of students polled, which was well over 700,000 students, said that they were actively disengaged at school. And those were grades 5 to 12. And then, you know, about 47% felt engaged. The poll was saying that those engagement scores was a range of questions, but it included whether they feel safe at school, whether they have a best friend at school, and really, like, that's like one friend, and whether they believe that the adults at school care about them. This is what advisory is going to address. So, once all of those things are taken care of, they can learn, and they can enjoy the learning process. I'll let you guys chime in if you want.
I don't think I have anything else to say. Amanda said it so well. I mean, it's about building a positive community. We want to have fun with kids, because I, I saw today at Field Day, I saw so many kids smiling and having fun, and that's what we want our advisory to look like as well. And it's also going to benefit those kiddos coming in with 6th grade. I mean, there's so many, in middle school, there, you know, seven different classes. So, it's going to be so good for those kiddos to have a one person, or many people, that they can turn to when they need support, not just, not just us. We want everybody to be supporting our students at Hampton Academy.
Do you have any questions for us?
My question is basically very simple. This is nothing new. This is happening across the state, across the country, with other school districts, correct?
Correct.
So, this is basically moving forward in the Hampton community to create a bond for the kids.
Absolutely.
Am I correct on that?
Yes. You are correct.
Thank you.
And a lot of the Seaco schools, they're all doing advisory every single day. So, we've been really excited, you know, this year, when we found out that advisory is going to be every single day, because it's going to just help with building that positive community for our students.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Les Masterman. I'm a psychologist. The seeds for advisory really were planted from the Safe Schools Initiative, and it was some research that was done at schools where a major bad event had happened, school shootings primarily. What they found, the researchers found, was that in every instance, 100%, somebody knew about the event that was going to happen, but they didn't tell anybody, because they didn't have anybody that they felt they could really trust. So, what came out of that was one trusted adult for every student, and that's really the basis of advisory. And so, what we're trying to do is have teachers interact with kids in a different way, not teaching science or math or whatever, but relating to them as a human being, and getting to know them and developing relationships, so that perhaps they will have that one trusted adult. And should an event be pending, they will be able to come forward, and maybe we can intervene with some of those before they happen. And that's what advisory is about, to me, and us, I think.
I would just make a comment. 34 years ago, I remember it, because it was the day one of my daughters was born, I went to an all-day in-service, and it was all about this new concept called Advisor/Advisee. And who didn't like it? Who wouldn't like the things that you folks are saying? And over the 30-plus years that followed when I was a teacher and when I was a principal, I don't think we ever got it right. So, as I said to Ken once, the devil's in the details. Good luck, because it's...
And a lot of the CCO schools, they're all doing advisory every single day. So we've been really excited, you know, this year when we found out that advisory is going to be every single day because it's going to just help with building that positive community for our students.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Les Masterman. I'm a psychologist. The seeds for advisory really were planted from the Safe Schools Initiative. And it was some research that was done at schools where a major bad event had happened, school shootings primarily. What they found, the researchers found was that in every instance, 100%, somebody knew about the event that was going to happen, but they didn't tell anybody because they didn't have anybody that they felt they could really trust. So what came out of that was one trusted adult for every student. And that's really the basis of advisory. And so what we're trying to do is have teachers interact with kids in a different way, not teaching science or math or whatever, but relating to them as a human being and getting to know them and developing relationships so that perhaps they will have that one trusted adult. And should an event be pending, they will be able to come forward and maybe we can intervene with some of those before they happen. And that's what advisory is about to me and us, I think.
I would just make a comment. 34 years ago, I remember it because it was the day one of my daughters was born, I went to an all-day in-service and it was all about this new concept called Advisor Advising. And who didn't like it? Who wouldn't like the things that you folks are saying? And over the 30-plus years that followed when I was a teacher and when I was a principal, I don't think we ever got it right. So as I said to Ken once, the devil's in the details. Good luck because it's certainly a worthy goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Lois DK.
Thank you. Nice to be here. You do have my report and it's very self-explanatory. I had a very interesting up and down year in special ed this year like everybody else, but we are wrapping it all up. Do you have any questions?
Frank?
Frank?
Yes, I've been looking at your numbers.
Yes.
Okay. And total special ed student enrollment, if I look at September of 2021
Yes.
And I look at your number in June of 2022, that's an increase of approximately 15% in students. We went from 174 to 199.
We did.
Now, the question is, obviously this number is going to increase for the fall enrollment because you are in the process of looking at additional students
Yep.
Program.
Correct.
Are you prepared for this dramatic increase? And when I say prepared, I'm talking about staff, pairs, et cetera, equipment, programs.
Yes, yes. We have been working on making sure that we're ready for all of these students. And there's a lot of transitions happening too. You know, they're coming, we have many second graders coming into third. We've got all kinds of activities and things to think about. But yes, staffing wise, we're working very hard on filling all the vacancies. We still have a couple. There's actually a few vacancies that I would like the board to there with whatever the superintendent wants. But pairs, ABA technicians for the NAC program, yes, any equipment for Bonnie's room. Yep, we're working on it all.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Amber?
So we've done a few updates. We've gotten rid of some of our Conica old copiers and replaced them with Canon. So now we're consistent across the district with our copiers. We've also updated some of our old computers for staff members. So we've updated the SRO's computers, the secretaries at Center and Marsden. We've also updated the librarian's computers. We're in the process of doing those right now. So by the end, everybody will have new computers for next year. And then we're just busy with Alma and all the other things winding down the end of the year with, you know, videoing graduation and farewell assemblies and getting everything organized and pictures taken to celebrate all the students' accomplishments. So that's about it.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
When we upgrade, update the student computers, what do we do with the ones that we no longer use?
So we usually sell them back to the company
Okay.
Or a company. This year, we're actually not recycling any computers. So this is our off year, which we haven't had in a really long time. That's why we're doing other big projects. So next year, we will be in a recycle space for that. And then the bigger computers that we're getting rid of, we're working on trying to figure out what we're going to do with them because a lot of places won't take the desktops anymore. They just want the Chromebooks. So we're working on trying to find a recycling program to take them.
Thank you. Frank?
And I noticed there was no mention of this, but how are we with the additional funding we receive from the Comcast?
So we've almost spent everything. We are just waiting on new microphones. So we've spent everything. We're just waiting on new microphones. Everything's been updated in the auditorium. They were just last in doing all of the monitors and all of the other speakers and sound system. And Nick's been working very diligently with all the key players of getting everything up and running. And we had our concerts in there and everything was smooth. So it was great.
And the fiber optics?
The fiber optics are coming. They're not installed yet. We are meeting with the town to figure out a date for that, but we'll be installing fiber optics between here and the fire station where we send our signal out of. And that's just to help make sure everything is getting broadcasted out for the town and for us. And we're working with them on that. We just don't have a final date. And we're hoping it'll happen over the summer so it doesn't interrupt anything.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Frank, when do we ask for this next year's cable money?
October.
October.
Yep, typically we go September, October. We'll reach out within September and they usually put us on the agenda for end of September, beginning of October. Yep.
And Nick's already planning. He's already got his list going. So he's great. He's got everything under control back there. So thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Keith, you have anything for us?
You still looking for help, Keith?
Better. Yeah.
There may be a number of volunteers in the audience.
Exactly. Never know.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
I would just like you to know that we're getting ready to start on our summer projects. We are having challenges of getting contractors for a couple of our projects. I just want to put that out there. And I just want to make a plea to anybody who's looking for a part-time summer job. The Hampton Facilities Department is looking for able-bodied folks that would like to work Monday through Friday, 7:00 in the morning to 3:30 in the afternoon, off on Saturday and Sunday. So you could come to the SAU office at Marsden School and fill out an application. All are welcome. Thank you.
How old, Keith?
15 and a half and above is what I'd like. And I want them to be mature. That's always the toughest thing, even when you're 60.
I know.
Keith, on some of the projects, is there a drop-dead time where, okay, it's August, we can't get someone until August 20th, but we can't start that project because school's going to be, are there times for those projects that we can't move forward?
Well, we're not at those drop-dead times yet, but there may be a few projects that we may have to carry over.
Okay.
But I don't know exactly what they are at this point in time as we're, everybody's facing this. It's a nationwide issue and it's not just because contractors need microchips to do our work, but I guess they need schedule. I had one contractor that said to me, I'm the laborer, I'm answering the phone, I'm running the equipment, you know, I mean, I think that was a little tongue-in-cheek, but I just think that's probably true for a lot of folks that are in the trades. But I just wanted to bring everybody's attention to it. Probably we'll complete everything. There'll be some divine intervention and everything will be completed. Again, we are still looking for summer hires here at Hampton Schools.
Keith, would you take somebody that could only work six out of nine weeks or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And if they have family vacations, we can plan those in the schedule too.
All right.
So just one more question.
Sure.
So the projects that are going forward this summer, is that coming out of money that was voted on a few months ago?
Oh, that project is moving forward. That's all in place.
We put in a warrant article for
Excreting to the roof and
So we have two years. Is this the first year of spending that money?
Well, that's always an ongoing thing, as you know. But those, yes, the projects that we have booked are pretty much all set. I mean, go down the list if you want, but there are a few little other projects. Go ahead, Mariah.
The only thing that has not started is the Center School Age Fact that's in that warrant article. And that's the, I believe, part of it is going to be done this summer, not the
Logistically, that project will be completed.
But we'd have two summers
Correct.
To do that.
Correct. To 2024.
Right. Any other questions for Keith? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your support throughout the year.
Anyway, I had a great year and my staff and the kids. Just want to say that. We had a great year financially and otherwise. And we made some money and we're getting some great new equipment and software that is needed.
Did we find the glasses?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the dishwasher works, right?
Excuse me?
The stove and the dishwasher.
They're, yay. I guess I just want to remind parents, next year, we are going back to paid lunches. So please fill out your applications. If you get approved for a reduced lunch, it is $0.40. If you get approved for free meals, it's breakfast and lunch. And we're going to keep the lunch prices at $3.10, $3.10, and the breakfast prices will be $1.65.
And if you don't like paying for lunch, please write to Senator Hassan and Jean Shaheen and Chris Pappas and Annie Custer. Write to them. Tell them your child benefited directly from having free lunch and breakfast and maybe they'll make a difference.
Great, yes.
What about summer school? Is it free for summer school or is?
Summer school, we're going to do, it's not, the district is paying the snacks and we're doing juice, snacks and juice.
For free?
Yep.
Still, okay.
So that's it.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Dr. Costa?
So we have some requests for permission to accept donations in Mr. Sadler's report. So flipping back to page 13, he is requesting permission to accept $1,500 from the Rotary Club. Can I give them all of them to you?
Why don't we do them one at a time?
Okay.
I will move that, that amount, $1,500. Second, Frank. All those in favor?
Thank you to the Rotary. And also we have a check for Box Tops for Education for $64.80.
Frank, we move that. Second, Wendy. Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you, PTA and all those parents who are submitting those box tops. And then we have a check from the Hampton PTA for $750. That's used for the Read 100 Books Program.
Frank, we'll move that. Ginny will second. Discussion, none, all in favor?
Thank you, PTA. And then $1,250 from the Hampton PTA to use for student enrichment.
Wendy, we'll move that. Second, Ginny. Discussion, none, all those in favor?
And again, thank you to the PTA. We appreciate the support. Just to my report, a couple of things to highlight that obviously this is the time of the year when we, as we try to wrap things up, we're finishing our hiring and we are bringing some closure to the school year. We are, believe it or not, planning for students to return in the fall. So it's kind of that transitional time of year where we're finishing up our hiring and I'm very involved with the exit interviews and just making sure that we have the staff in place. We have our eighth graders who will have their final assembly this Thursday evening at 6 o'clock. That'll be in the back of Hampton Academy. We are looking forward to that. We also have our fifth grade farewell, which will be this Thursday at 1 o'clock. So we're excited about that as well. We want to congratulate the boys' track team at Hampton Academy that were the regional champs on June 1st. That was just wonderful. Congratulations. And believe it or not, Mariah and I had the chance to meet with Catherine Haraki on June 1st to start thinking about the budget for next year. So things are, wheels are in motion. We will be having a barbecue this Monday at 11:30 where we will be having some special announcements in recognition. The board and everyone is invited to that in our district. So that'll be Monday at 11:30. Thank you to Mrs. Borg in advance for doing that for us. Just taking a look at some other things in my notes tomorrow. The leadership team will be meeting with Chief Dave Hobbs, Deputy Chief Alex Reno from Hampton Police, but also Mike Mann from Hampton Fire and Rescue to talk specifically about the governor's letter regarding what's happening in school safety. So we will be going through that checklist. We are, well, we are trying to plan a night in the fall where we'll be able to have the community in to have a conversation around school safety. So we're looking forward to doing that. They just asked that we have a little bit of time, given the challenges right now at the beach, and they asked if we could wait till after Seafood Festival. But they're happy to get something on the books for September. So just to let you know about that. So we're looking forward to that conversation tomorrow. It will be the first part of our leadership team. And obviously, we're excited to host Camp Invention, which will be in between the end of the school year and between that and the start of extended school year and summer programming. We're looking to host that. And results from the New Hampshire State Assessments will go home on Friday with all students. So parents can look forward to receiving the results from the state testing. Those are for students in grades three through eight. And Mariah and I have the opportunity to attend the New Hampshire School Administrators Association Annual Conference, June 27th to 29th. We're looking forward to that. And I guess just one other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is our nurses are all clear certified at this time so that as we think about whatever happens with COVID, we will have the ability to do COVID testing in our buildings and of course, with obviously parent permission. We would not do that without parent permission, but we do have that ability to do that if we so need it. And other than that, I just want to thank everyone for what has been a challenging year, but a very productive year. And I'm excited that we've been able to have some normalcy with field days and end of the year celebrations and field trips. I would say that it's been really exciting to participate in some of these events. I had the pleasure of joining the eighth graders on their trip to Quebec, which was just a wonderful trip. And special thanks to Nicole Wilcox, Jenna Nado and SRO Zach Terranzoni for joining me and just having a fantastic time up in Quebec City. It was fantastic. And just a special thanks to the board, the leadership team and the community for supporting our schools and for making this a great place for our children and staff to come to every day. Questions for me?
Any questions for Dr. Costa? Frank?
Yeah, just clarification. When you're looking at the meeting in the fall, September, October, whenever it's convenient for the police department and the fire department, are we going to open that up? I know you said the community, but I'm also looking at all the daycare facilities within the Hampton community as well as Sacred Heart because this is a critical issue that as a community, we should be addressing.
Absolutely. In fact, tomorrow, I know that it's just the beginning of the conversations. I anticipate that during the leadership retreat this summer, which will take place in July, the conversations will continue, but we are absolutely willing to work with the schools in all of Hampton. In fact, we already met with SAU 21 and the mental health team regarding just an opportunity to debrief about what happened in Uvalde, Texas. So our partnership with SAU 21, Sacred Heart, and obviously our preschools, we welcome that opportunity to come together, have conversations and to talk specifically around safety. Thank you.
I was going to suggest to the board members that I know we talked briefly about it, but we were thinking about something in September. So if anybody had some dates so that when Lois meets with other folks, she could suggest those, not that we'd be locked into those dates, my thought might be the third Tuesday in September.
That's PTA.
Oh, see, that's why.
Budget and PTA, yeah.
Okay, the third Wednesday in September.
I think that's just planning, boy, and that doesn't affect us.
I think, you know, and I understand where you're coming from, but I think when Dr. Costa meets with all these people, then we, you know, she comes up with a number of dates and brings it back to the board.
Right, but there's no sense coming up with a date if we already know it's
No, I know that. If we come up with a date
Well, why don't we come up with three?
It'd be advantageous for those two.
That's right. But why don't we come up with three that work for us?
Okay.
So that was one.
How about the 21st and the 27th, which is the fourth Tuesday, and then the 28th, which is the
With everybody?
Can we do those?
Okay. And then we'll see how they go. But at least we've given them some dates.
Beautiful.
That's fine with me. Now, my final question, because it was a two-parter, and this is basically, I guess, to our finance person. Is there any additional funding available through the state on school security? through the state on school security?
Well, actually, there is. There's going to be more money coming out for building aid, whether we can apply for it. In fact, that was one of the things that did come out, that I know that I had a conversation, maybe with Mr. Lassar, just briefly about. So, there could be building aid that is available specifically for safety. But if we had gotten it in the past, we would...
We have used it in the past.
So we would be considered...
That was covert money.
No, we've applied for this in the past.
Okay.
We wouldn't be on the priority list. It would be schools that didn't get money from the last time they offered building aid for this purpose. But yes, there is going to be a pretty significant amount of money that is going to be available. But it's something that we will certainly look into, because I am aware that it could be coming. And it's
All set with Dr. Costa? Okay. I think we've gone through a few of the other things on the new business. HR position, Frank?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Yes, I asked for this to be placed on the agenda, because I know in the past, we've had numerous discussions regarding a part-time HR person, which we have budgeted for in our booklet. I think we kept the position open, we just put the dollar into it to maintain it. But I think as we are moving forward, with everything being thrown at us, and the administration and the leadership team, that I think this is becoming a critical position to look at. You know, we have employment background checks, we have monitoring of the absenteeism, we, you know, regarding the three-day, and you need the doctor's note, whatever. I think some things are falling through the crack. And I think this position has become more apparent in a need position moving forward. So I like to bring that up, you know, and reestablish this position for the '22-'23 calendar year, which is becoming critical now for us. And I'm looking at it, not as a full-time, but as a part-time that we originally approved back about three years ago.
Are you looking for a motion to do that?
Well, I'm making the motion that we move forward with this position that has been laying dormant for the last three years.
So...
For the '22-'23 calendar year, to offset Mariah's...
Right, I understand.
And the superintendent, and the administrators workload.
Okay. So, we would have to put that in for our budget discussions in November, correct?
No, I want to, no, it is in the budget.
Right.
It is, has a dollar amount, it's not significant.
Right.
Okay, what I'm asking to do is have Mariah look at where we can get the funding for that position for the '22-'23 calendar year, which is starting in September. Because I think it's going to be coming in a...
Starting in July.
Yes, July, sorry. But it'll give the opportunity for both our business administrator and our superintendent to post the position and move forward.
Who's second?
I'll second it, but I think we should ask Mariah probably, if she thinks at this point, she can, she has that kind, if she has money. Because we've been adding a lot of stuff in the last couple of weeks. And I think Mariah's the one to tell us that I can't find it at this point.
I would prefer that we, there's a couple of reasons that I would like to wait on this position. One, it's, I was looking at the budget and uploading the new budget in, and it's, we've had two years of COVID where we didn't utilize a lot of funds, we didn't utilize a lot of activity accounts, we didn't, and we, and, so we had that padding for expenses. As I'm putting in the budget for next year, I know that we already have a district student that we did not budget for. A lot of other little things that are coming up that, and knowing it's going to be a normal year, that I would prefer if we would discuss it during budget season and put it in the '23-'24, if that's the decision that we come to.
I would think that we could discuss it in probably September, before we get to budget season. So you can have a pro and a con of why we should have it, why we need it, what's going amiss, what's being missed, what isn't being missed, who's having to take from their job to do this HR job, because somebody is. And if we have one person responsible, then we don't have to look at three different people and say, okay, who, whose plate was overloaded this week. And, you know, so I think if you and Kathy and Lois get together, and you decide, what is this HR person going to look like? What are they, what do we need to have them cover? What's this going to cost? Then we could go in September, and we could start saying, this is definitely something we've got a budget for. And I mean, I don't want to put any extra on your plate now, but I think we need this, because if we mess up on HR, that costs a lot more than their part-time position.
Further discussion?
I don't know, I just, I think Frank's right. I think it's important. We need it. I've been saying for a while, I really think we need an HR person. It's something we're doing piecemeal. And there are a lot of federal and state guidelines around it, and we need somebody focused on that. You need somebody that the staff and administration can go to, that's always their point person, instead of trying to figure out who it is. But at the same time, we've had a lot of discussions about salaries, and said that we are not going to go forward with things because they weren't in the budget. And so, I absolutely agree that we should look at this. If you guys could put together, I think a job description is probably really what we're looking for, and potential salaries, and start looking at it early in the year. I don't see how we get it done before next year, even though I wish we could.
No, I agree.
That's my thought. Further discussion? Okay. Frank, your motion in a nutshell is to try to put this in place?
For July, but I'm willing to pull my motion, or withdraw my motion, based on the input that I've received. And we can look at it in September and readdress the situation.
Is that good with you, Ginny?
Yep, that's fine.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. So you'll start to work on that? Okay. Discussion on Board Policy BHC. Frank?
Okay, yes, yes. Let me pass this out. Is this BHC? Well, I've got it as GBD, but it's Board Employee Communication.
It's the same thing. It's identical.
So let's pass these along, in case nobody has it.
I have several.
I have.
We have lots.
Okay. So, I know that back over a year ago, I made the recommendation on this Board Employee Communication, to make some minor changes to this policy, that opened it up more for the community to talk to us, the staff to talk to us. But I think there's been some gray areas in the policy that I originally quoted, that things are starting to bypass. And I don't want to use the word chain of command, but people are bypassing their administrator, they're bypassing the superintendent, and they're coming directly to the board. And I think that that is not conducive, because the administration has not had an opportunity to address their concerns, and it's coming to us, and we are circumventing the entire process. So I would like to make the motion that we readdress this policy, okay, and make it more in tune that you have to exhaust your initial contact first before coming to the board. In other words, go to your administrator, go to the superintendent, whatever, before it finally comes here. Because I think in the last several months, we've been inundated with emails that have bypassed Dr. Costa, bypassed the principals in question, and it falls on us, okay? And that was not my intent when I made those changes. It was basically, when I made those recommendations, it's like if you go to a party, or you go to a graduation, and somebody approaches you, yes, you can talk to them, okay? Not that we're going to bypass everything and go directly to the board. So I want to make the motion that we go back to the policy committee and have them reevaluate this situation for the next board meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, just as an aside, I think GBD is exactly the same as BHC.
Identical.
So...
Yes, the one that's currently on the website is BHC, but the text is the same.
Right, so when you revisit those in your policy committee, revisit both of them?
Can we maybe get rid of one? Do we have to have both?
I don't know.
No, GBD is something, there must, there must have been a point where they rearranged the naming conventions.
Right.
Because GBD, there is a GBD, it's completely different.
Well, that's what, pulled it off of the board.
So maybe we can grab both of them?
Pulled it right off the webpage.
Just look at both of them when you...
We will double-check, but the other one has nothing to do with it.
So it's moved to second, to have our policy committee revisit GBD anyway, and probably BHC. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Exit interviews?
Yep, just to let you know, those are going very well. It's very insightful to have these conversations with those staff that are leaving the district or retiring. And those conversations have been very enlightening. So just to let you know, those are happening.
Okay. Mariah?
So, it is May. I am trying to, well, June, trying to finish up all the invoices and budget for the year. When I did the report at the end of May, we are looking to have a surplus estimate of $350,000 to $400,000. And the majority of that is from our CAT aid that we get. We do all the paperwork for the year. It goes to them in July. So that money is for prior years, so the past year, so we can't spend that. So that has to go back. So really, our budget will be close to completed. Also, in the report, I have the annual TD Bank credit card expenses. So you could look over that. If you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me, or now, whatever. But I would like, I'd just like to give that to you at the end of the year, so you can see what was on the credit card. Majority of it is, Mary has a credit card in case she has to have to get emergency breads and foods and milks. And then, for travel, to get airfares, PD, a lot of that is what the credit card is used for. It's stuff that we, to get a vendor is too difficult. And then, for the food service program, we are looking great. We decided to utilize some of that funds, and are updating their computer program that right now has no assistance. If we had a problem with it, we couldn't get help. So we decided to update that, get a couple new scanners, and replace a few tables with some of the funds. But she will still look in the positive this year. And our grants, we're cleaning and finishing up the grants. We will see where we're at, and then rewrite what we can utilize for the rest of the summer, and post, I'll post the two-estrange grant on the website. And then, we start all over again. It's like, as soon as I'm doing this, I'm already made all the new contracts, all the new positions for payroll, rolled over the system, and putting the new budget in. So, it's closing and starting a year all-in-one. Any questions? Oh, and my audit, just so that you know, is the last week of July. So I have everything done prior to the last week of July. So I will have final numbers in August for you.
Any questions?
Okay, on page 47, I take it that effective July 1st, that you will be changing this from Director of Finance to...
Yes, I'm changing my title on that. I will be. It's very exciting. I worked hard for that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Personnel, hiring, Dr. Costa?
Yep, so we have two professional positions that we are looking to seek your support for tonight. The first one is, as we know, that Mrs. Hoppa will be leaving at the end of the year. And so, we would like to, I would like to nominate Elizabeth Henderson for the incoming Assistant Principal, replacing Kathleen Hoppa.
I'll make the motion to accept that nomination. Seconded Wendy. Discussion?
Yeah, just two comments regarding the position. First of all, I want to say that all four, promoting from within, okay? But my two comments. One, will we have a mentoring program set up for the individual? That's number one. And number two, my concern is, obviously, coming from within, there may be, how do I put this?
There may be a little bit of interest, you know, of moving from being a teacher to being a supervisor.
Management, management.
Yeah, that's not always an easy role.
Right. So let me speak to the first one, and then maybe Mr. Sadler might want to speak to the second one, because those are things that we talked about. So we will work with the New Hampshire School Principals Association to ensure that she does have a mentor, just as we've done with all of the Assistant Principals. I think that's just good practice. So, we will do that. Mr. Sadler, do you want to talk specifically around the second question? And I can always chime in too.
Sure. No, it's a legitimate concern. We had on our interview panel, you know, something we discussed as a team. And we made sure we put one general question on the first interview about that, and then an extremely pointed question that was directly asking. I feel with Mrs. Henderson's professionalism and ethical standpoint, since that's not going to be an issue at our school. I think she clearly knows the defined roles of a teacher versus an administrator, and where that boundary lies. If I had any question around that, or was worried about it, I wouldn't be bringing her forward at this time. And I am, because I'm confident that she has the skillset and the knowledge to really draw that line that needs to be drawn between being an administrator and a colleague. And it's a big change for anybody.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. She'll do a great job, I'm sure. Okay. Did we vote on that?
No.
We didn't.
He motioned it, but we haven't.
Okay, I forget, who made the motion?
You motioned, I seconded.
Me and you. It's been a long night. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Lois?
All right. And the next candidate is, as we know, Michaela Moran, who is the PE teacher at Center School, has given her resignation. And we would like to nominate Cooper Valinsky, who is replacing Michaela Moran. And he has just completed his first full year at Conval. He does live in the area. And Tim and his team did a great job going through the process. So it would be Cooper Valinsky.
Is that Mrs. Valinsky's from Seabrook related?
Do we have that in our pack? I don't think we have it in our packet.
I don't have that.
I have it. It was, I'm hand carrying it. You are more than welcome to... Yep, I have one for each of you. Sorry.
Are they, oh, wait a minute.
Yep, we got them. You want to pass them that way? I'll get it to Ginny.
Ginny?
Got it. You're welcome.
See, this is another reason why we need an HR person.
Even if we did, I still would have to pass them out, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I got it, I got it. I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you.
Move Frank, second. Wendy, discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor of Cooper Valinsky?
Thank you.
All right.
We have a few others I hand carried, only because I know that we are trying to secure some specific positions in the Pupil Service Department. So, we have... So we have an ABA technician, Jessica Clark, that we'd like to be able to offer her a work agreement for. So Jessica Clark, just a name, it's a new position.
So a motion to accept that?
Yep.
Seconded Ginny. Discussion, anyone? All those in favor? Okay, that one's...
Yep. And then the other one is, we need a Speech Language Assistant for Center School, and we'd like to have Erica Hayfield fill that position for us.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Moved Frank to accept, seconded Wendy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
And we have a transfer from Mahersen School to Center School, Audrey Ayotte, who will be the ABA technician, and will do a phenomenal job doing that.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Seconded Frank. Discussion, anyone? All those in favor? We're good.
That's it. Thank you very much.
I don't have to sign anything.
Nope, I just wanted to bring them to your attention, just because we just wanted to keep you in the loop.
Do we have any other positions that are open in the staff, teachers, etc.?
We do, we have one case manager position open at Mahersen School, given the configuration of what we decided to do with case managers.
Okay.
Yep.
We have...
I can talk about that non-public if you wish.
We have five policies, first reads for all of them. Someone want to make a motion on them? Wendy, seconded Frank. Any discussion? They're all first reads.
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor? First read, first read. All right. We have board minutes of May 10th. Let's do public, I guess. Someone want to make a motion to approve those? You want to do both of them?
Sure.
Public and non-public for May 10th?
Sure.
Okay, moved Wendy, seconded Frank. Discussion? All in favor? Frank, yep, aye.
Sorry.
That's okay, we got it. And then we have a board meeting of June 1st. By the way, just as an aside, I love the way Mariah did the May 10th non-public.
Yes, I have, I have a, I have a notice on that too, telling us what exactly we can seal the minutes for.
Yeah, we need to talk about that.
Yeah, because we can't do what we thought we could do.
And also, I'd like to figure out how you unseal them, but that's...
You take a while. That, you take a while, yep.
Okay, so, so I like that.
Yeah, it's clean.
Yeah, it is clean. And so, the board meeting of June 1st, we have, you want to do the public and non-public?
Sure.
Same time? Take a motion to accept? Ginny?
Yep.
Seconded Frank. Discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Frank?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Ginny, did you say yes?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I'm thinking we need to go into non-public.
Unless you want to pick a date for our next meeting, or not?
I was going to try to do that right now.
You got it, either way.
We also have to have a meeting to go over the superintendent's evaluation and what we're going to present.
Correct. If we can, remind me to talk about that in non-public, because I have it.
You keep, you can't do that in non-public, it's not non-public information.
No, but this is procedural stuff.
Oh, okay, for the superintendent's evaluation?
Yeah.
Okay.
A problem I'm having getting the information, but we'll talk, talk about it. So what do you folks want to do about a July meeting? We've gone all sorts of different directions on July. Lois, why don't we get your thoughts on whether you think we need one, or we could get by without one?
If you want to have one, it's fine to have one. I will be away until the, through the, through the 16th. So if we wanted to have one, we could do it on the 19th. If you felt like we didn't need to have one, we could have it on August 9th. It comes pretty early in August, so it's completely, it's completely up to you.
Discussion, Frank?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we go with the normal timeframe for August, and there's really nothing going on in July that I can think of, unless there's an emergency situation, which we will always call an emergency board meeting. So I would just like to say, let's just do it in August.
At the normal second Tuesday?
Yeah.
August 9th?
Certainly.
All right, that's been moved by Frank. Seconded, I'll second it. All those in favor? So it's, so it's August 9th. Can I, can I ask that, or can we discuss it, that we don't need principals or directors' reports, because they'll spend all July doing, doing their reports for August 9th?
We don't need their reports, but we need them here.
Okay, that's fair enough. I go back to our discussion that we had about, you know, having them take their vacations, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know...
Why do we need them here? I guess that's my question.
I just think it sets the precedent, we're not having, we're having our first meeting in skipping July, they've got six to eight weeks to take a vacation from June, July 1st until August 9th. So I don't think, if we don't have anything show up, we can say we don't need them, but we don't know that right now.
Yeah, right, right.
But Lois, can you let them know? We do not need their reports.
Absolutely, yes, I can.
I'll buy into that.
Well, I don't know, you may say by that time, we don't need them.
Well, I guess, and this is, we're still in discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess if that's the case, and I'm just looking at this crazy thing, and I'm going to August, our normal meeting's on the 9th, right?
Right.
Yep.
When does school start?
Twenty.
No, it's okay. So the teachers, the new teachers start on the 19th, and the first day for all students is Tuesday, the 30th.
The 30th?
Yep.
Well, I'm not opposed, and I'm just throwing this out, that we move our ninth, our August 9th meeting to, say, the 23rd, with the principals and everything else, which is leading into opening school a week coming up, and then if anything does come up, you know, we can address it. That way, they're there, they're giving us the plans for opening day, whatever. So I would just make the recommendation that we go to the 23rd, August 23rd instead of August 9th, if nobody's opposed to that.
No, I'll give up my week of vacation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, Ginny, don't do that.
No, I don't mind, I'm not going to do it, I'm not going away for a week.
Where are you going?
Nowhere. I'm going to somewhere, having vacation, the school is closed, so I'm on vacation, staycation. Yeah, staycation. But that 23rd is fine.
You sure?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I can move that.
No, that 23rd is fine.
Okay.
Okay, I will second it for the 23rd. Any further discussion? Okay, so it's 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Board meeting.
Yep.
No board meeting on the 9th. No board meeting on 12th of July.
Right.
Now, in the past, summer hirings, we've kind of let Lois just go right ahead.
Yep, I'll make the motion to let Lois move forward with all that stuff, if we got a second.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
We've done this every year.
Yeah, we have, we have.
It's one case manager.
Yeah.
And there might be a para, or two.
We don't deal with paras, you do.
What's going on with Mrs. Henderson's position?
I can, I can fill you in in non-public, or it's up to you. Yep, yes.
Okay, so that is everything. Last chance for comments from the public? No?
That closes.
Okay. We will go into non-public under RSA 91A3, Roman numeral 2A. Roll call, Frank?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself. So we're in no non-public. Okay, we are, we are back in session. Motion, motion to adjourn, Wendy?
Motion to adjourn.
Move, seconded Ginny. All those in favor? Aye, 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 are you in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our next meeting is not until Tuesday, August 23rd, at 6 o'clock. Thank you.